Eu declaro esta sessão aberta sob proteção de Deus. Sob a proteção de Deus, começamos nosso trabalho. Esta sessão especial foi convenida em resposta à demanda número 544 de 2005, publicada pela presidência e outros senadores, aprovada pelo Senado Federal plenário. Esta sessão é dedicada a honrarem o pastor Jedalti Vitalino Tixira Gueros, fundador da Igreja Cristã de Maranhata, que morreu no dia 5 de julho de 2025. Os convidados seguintes constituem o painel desta sessão especial: antigo presidente da República do Brasil, Jeremias Bolsonaro; presidente ativo da Igreja Cristã de Maranhata, pastor Alexandro Ruba Milito Gueros; pastor colonel Julio César Costa; conselheiro presbiterial da Igreja de Maranhata; Dízia Jurama Barros Gueros Britan, filha da honoreira, pastor Jedalti Gueros; e Sr. Alberto Veltin Baitren, filho da honoreira. Minha irmã mais velha. Magno Malta, minha irmã mais velha. Agora nós juntamos-nos em uma oração de glorificação a Deus com o pastor Edelson Rochadias.
Eu convido todos a se sentar. Nós rezamos. Nosso Senhor Deus, nós chamamos a força que está no sangue de Jesus. Nós invocamos o seu nome, porque nesse nome nós confiamos na promessa do Senhor. Assim, nós invocamos o seu nome para esta sessão sagrada, como todo mundo está aqui para esta tributo, mas nós sabemos bem que apenas seu nome será glorificado. Que seja o nome do Senhor. Receba nossa adoração, nossa invocação, em nome de Jesus. Amém.
Eu convido todos a se sentar com respeito enquanto ouvirmos o Anjo Nacional, que será feito pelo time de adoração da Igreja Cristã de Maranhata, seguido por uma música de prazer. Sobre a paz mais suave. Eu abençoo todos os pastores presentes da Igreja de Maranhata, e eu também abençoo outros líderes de outras denominações que estão participando com nós nesta sessão sagrada. Em memória, uma tributo posthumo ao pastor Jedalti Gueros. Eu reconheço no plenário a presença do procurador público de Minas Gerais, Marco Antonio Picone Soares. Eu também reconheço a presença do juiz honorable do tribunal de justiça do Distrito Federal e Territórios, Nilsoni de Freitas, e o presidente do Instituto de Investigação e Teologia Cristã, Robson Santos. Eu reconheço a presença de... deputino presidente do Fronteiro Parlamentar Evangelístico, nosso querido Gilberto Nasimento. Quando você se torna muito próximo de amigos, você até esquece o nome: Gilberto Nasimento. Quem neste momento, nesta sessão sagrada, representa o Fronteiro Parlamentar Evangelístico. Na Chama de Deputados, e nós somos todos parte do Congresso Nacional. Eu pedi ao secretário general da board mostrar um vídeo institucional, em tributo posthumo ao pastor Jedalti Vitalino Tixira Gueros.
Jedalti Vitalino Tixira Gueros nasceu no dia 19 de novembro de 1931, na cidade de Bon Jesus do Ibeboana, no estado de Rio de Janeiro. Como criança, ele mudou para a cidade de Vila Valha, no estado de Espirito Santo, onde ele cresceu em um lar evangélico, rodeado de amor, cuidado e educado nos melhores valores cristãs. Como resultado desta formação, neste ambiente evangélico, ele conheceu a dona Jurama Barros, com quem ele se casou no dia 15 de março de 1958, e que sempre foi o amor de sua vida. E com quem ele tinha uma filha, que, como testamento a este amor, foi dada o mesmo nome que sua mãe, Jurama. Um graduado de 1954 como dentista federal da Universidade de Espirito Santo, e com estudos post-graduados em didática educacional superior, dentreia e ensino, morreu na sua vida profissional, com inúmeros cursos no Brasil e fora. E havendo servido na marina brasileira, onde ele trabalhou como dentista, começando em 1969, e onde recebeu um honra especial em outubro de 2021 na Escola de Aprendizagem de Seisores da Espirito Santo. O Dr. Jedalti Gueros recebeu dezenas de honras e prêmios no seu caminho como profissional dental, educador e ministro pastoral, incluindo um doutorato honorário em direitos sociais e humanitários, o título autêntico de ambassador da paz da Suprema Concistência Internacional de Ambascadores da Paz, o título de comandante da ordem de beneficentes culturais da humanidade, e o prêmio de mérito funcional emitido pela marina brasileira em 1980 e 1983. Ele foi conferido o rank de comandante dos Domingos Martins, ordem de mérito, no estado de Espirito Santo, pelo poder legislativo. Ele recebeu uma tributo da Assembleia Legislativa do Estado de Espirito Santo com a comemoração de João Ferreira de Almeida. A Assembleia Legislativa do Estado de Espirito Santo também estabeleceu a comemoração de Jedalti Vitalino Tixira Gueros de mérito legislativo em seu honra. Jedalti Gueros foi chamado para o ministério pastoral no dia 13 de fevereiro de 1969. Daí em diante, ele fez o trabalho de Deus sua causa, servindo através de um ministério voluntário e sem renda. Durante mais de 50 anos, ele demonstrou o exemplo maior de desejo e amor pelo evangelho, mesmo enquanto balanceia o ministério de dedicação extrema com responsabilidades familiares e profissionais. Desde que ele era uma referência nacional no campo da dentreia, liderando a Igreja Cristã de Maranhata, que ele ajudou a estabelecer sua capacidade de liderança e manutenção inadecuada e o propósito de Deus em sua vida e ministério foram manifestados diariamente durante os anos, projetando a instituição e seu mensaje para todos os continentes da Terra. Além de seu papel invaluable em guiando as abordagens doutrinais na vida diária da igreja, pastor Jedalti Gueros, como um homem inteligente, visionário de oração e ação, liderou vários projetos que se tornaram altamente relevantes em responsabilidade social e ambiental, fortalecendo os vínculos familiares e comunicação. Estabelecendo uma rede de rádio e televisão com reach mundial, os resultados alcançados, visíveis e extraordinárias continuam e são projetados para um certo futuro firme e bíblico. Onde os sinais de seu mensaje central, seu e os restantes igrejas, se tornam mais relevantes, impactantes e verdadeiros a cada dia. O Senhor Jesus de Maranhata está vindo.
Neste momento, o time de adoração vai performar a música "Preciosas Graças". Agora, eu vou virar o piso para o antigo presidente da República. Eu quero fazer um preambulo sobre 2016/2018, quando eu ainda era candidato pré para presidente da República aqui em minha demanda. Nós fizemos uma sessão sagrada como esta, mas muito maior, comemorando os 50 anos da Igreja Cristã de Maranhata. No dia, nesse evento, estava o antigo candidato pré para presidente da República, Jeremias Bolsonaro. Algumas pessoas creem em coincidências e outras não. Esse é o meu caso. No mundo espiritual, não há coincidências, Maranhata. No momento em que todos os sinais que estão na Palavra, nenhum fora delas, apontam para o fim, como Jesus disse, como o pastor Jedalti pregaria durante toda a sua vida. Não é coincidência que Deus o pegou no momento em que podemos ver, olhar e dizer: "É o fim". Tudo aponta, tudo converge para o que a Bíblia diz. É assim que é o mundo. E nesses 50 anos em que meu amigo, pastor Jedalti, agora em uma sessão sagrada de tributo posthumo, aqui está, agora como antigo presidente da República, o cidadão e antigo presidente desta nação, Jer Bolsonaro, que, à minha convidação, justamente como em 2018, à minha convidação, está aqui para pagar sua tributo posthumo e celebrar o legado deste homem de Deus que vive entre nós, prestando sobre a vida e os tempos finais, como diz a Bíblia, President Bolsonaro. Senhoras e senhores, irmãos, querido Magno Malta, que a paz de Cristo esteja com vocês. Eu agradeço a vocês pela oportunidade de falar em um evento tão significativo. Olhando brevemente para o background de Jedalti, eu encontrei algo em comum com ele. Meu pai era um dentista prático, apenas quatro anos maior que ele. Eu sei um pouco sobre a história desses em essa profissão. Mas, senhoras e senhores, a vida é feita de momentos. E este é o momento para eternizar a vida de querido Jedalti, seus exemplos, seus sermons e a maneira como ele liderou este grande trabalho, a Igreja de Maranhata. Eu creio em Deus. Eu peço pelas suas orações, e muitas vezes o que é óbvio está justo em frente de você. As pessoas poderosas desta nação, algumas nesta casa, quando elas se tornam conscientes da verdade óbvia de que um dia tudo passará, as coisas vão mudar. Quantas vezes eu falei sobre o que nos falta para se tornar a terra prometida do Oeste? Estamos quase lá, mas alguns nos estão preso. Mas sigamos o exemplo de Jedalti. Nós creemos que cada um faz a sua parte, dando o seu melhor. Se esta missão prova impossível, então sim, coloque-la nas mãos de Deus. Muito obrigado a vocês. Que Deus conforte a família e amigos de querido Jedalti. Eu levanto o piso por três minutos para nosso prestigioso congressário federal, Gilberto Nasimento, presidente do Fronteiro Parlamentar Evangelístico. Presidente mais excelente desta sessão, senador Magno Malta, por sua vida eu adoro Deus. Meu querido presidente Bolsonaro, que Deus baje sua vida, outros membros do painel, e eu não vou mencionar todos aqui, porque nosso tempo passa muito rápido, mas eu também quero abençoar nosso querido pastor Alexandro Gueros, presidente da igreja. Eu também abençoo o secretário geral da igreja, pastor Luiz Eugênio Santos, e eu também quero abençoar nosso pastor Daniel Santana, que é o pastor que fez grande trabalho aí em São Paulo, e mesmo que ele não esteja presente, eu envio meus caros desejos a ele. E eu abençoo todos os outros pastores, presidentes, pastores e diretores desta igreja. Em um momento como este, senador, Magno Malta, eu estava sentado aí pensando o seguinte: "Eu tenho participado de muitas sessões aqui na Chama de Deputados, dado o tempo que eu tenho aqui no Senado e na chama. E ocasionalmente, quando convidado aqui para o Senado, e muitas vezes eu vi sessões com ministros do governo, com governos eleitos, com homens confiáveis do governo." Porque nós temos dois tipos de homens confiáveis: um homem confiado por um governo terrestre.
Because we have two types of trusted men, a man trusted by an earthly government. And it's easy to see, for example, when we have a presidential candidate, some people walk with him, carrying his briefcase, collaborating with his government program, and then when the president is elected, or a governor is elected, or a mayor is elected, he invites him to be his trusted man. But they are trusted men of governments that pass away, governments that last four or eight years and then end. But I praise God because I have seen men like this here, in gatherings like this, with ministers, but today I see different trusted men. I see trusted men of a government who were not simply, they have already served time in the chamber and more. Is my time up? Can you give me another minute? Let me see. Magna, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I'll stop now, right? I gave 2... Okay, thank you very much. What we observe is that when these trusted men of earthly governments are called, many times they were carrying their candidate's bag. Now, we have another type of trusted man who sometimes was on the factory floor, and shortly after hears the voice of the Holy Spirit. "Come, my son, for I have a special work for you." Many were there caring for someone's teeth, like our dear pastor Jedalti. And soon God had called him to be not just someone who cared for teeth, but to care for souls, and he said, "Lord, here I am." And these trusted men who are here this afternoon, my dear Senator Magna Malta, are not trusted men of a government that ends, but are men of an eternal government, of a government that continues, and who one day will hear, "Come, you who are blessed by my Father, receive what I have for you." Therefore, congratulations to all of you. Congratulations to our dear friends. I mean, today in this posthumous tribute to the one we respected and loved so much, our teacher every Saturday morning on television, when we watch his programs. But who is now in eternity, in the Father's arms? Our land on July 5th became poorer, but heaven was enriched with the presence of our dear pastor Jedalti Didolino Tixira Gueros. May this ministry continue to be blessed, preaching the gospel for more than ever. Matthew 24 is being fulfilled, and only verse 14 remains. My dear president and Magna as well. And when the gospel of the kingdom is preached to all nations, then the end will come, and we are saying, "Maranatha, come, Lord Jesus." I bring the embrace and word from the Evangelical Parliamentary Front of the Chamber of Deputies here to all of you. Continue this good work, continue this great ministry that our pastor Jedalti started, for we will all soon be there, singing and being served by the Lamb forever. May God bless you all, and may the Lord's blessing be upon us, and on the responsibility we have to preach the gospel everywhere so that he may hasten his return. May God bless everyone in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I yield the floor to Pastor Alexandre Rubens Milito Gueros, president of the Maranatha Christian Church. His Excellency Senator Magna Malta, President Jeremias Bolsonaro, Congressman Gilberto Nasimento, other civil and military and ecclesiastical authorities present, members of Pastor Jedalti Gueros immediate family, and all friends. First of all, I thank on behalf of the Maranatha Christian Church, the dear and esteemed Senator Magna Malta, for promoting the solemn session in the federal senate. In honor of the Moses of our church, Pastor Jedalti Gueros. It was the will of our Lord God, in his unfathomable wisdom, that I should be given the honor and gratifying mission of representing the Maranatha Christian Church at this ceremony. Grateful for the affection, respect, and admiration that I've always held for the honorary. The result of 53 years of fellowship with him, time that I believe gives me the authority to speak about his character. Seeking in the Bible a passage that would edify us and accurately express the meaning of Pastor Jedalti Gueros ministry, I found the words of the Apostle Paul in 2 Corinthians, chapter 12, verses 14 and 15, where he speaks about the signs of his apostleship. "I will not be a burden to you," says the apostle, "for I do not seek your possessions, but you yourselves. Children should not store up for their parents, but parents for their children. I will very gladly spend and be entirely spent for your souls." Following the apostles' example, Jedalti Gueros lived spending and donating his own possessions to the church, and spending himself for the church's good. He lived to store up treasures for the church of the Lord Jesus. And I clarify, he didn't store up treasures exclusively for Maranatha, but for churches of different evangelical and Pentecostal denominations, including on other continents. That's why he leaves behind a great sense of longing, not only among adults, curiously, but also among the children who knew him, children he loved, and with whom he had relationships, and to whom he never failed to respond when he received messages from them. Here's a recent testimony from last week of a three-year-old child who, upon hearing her parents' comment on the passing of the honorary, said, "Daddy, he didn't die, but went to his other home." But returning to what I was saying before about the influence of the church that received Pastor Jedalti's legacy, he transmitted his teachings to other denominations in other countries. And so it was. Various churches around the world were awakened or reawakened. When they heard the testimony that a church in Brazil continued to experience the events of Pentecost, as recorded in the Book of Acts, a church that continued to enjoy the great outpouring of the Holy Spirit, accompanied by spiritual gifts that had been promised, which was promised to occur in the last days, as prophesied by Joel. It was through Pastor Jedalti's ministry that our Lord Jesus, through his spirit, made us understand that we should live like the first disciples, persevering in the apostles' doctrine. In fellowship among the brethren, in the breaking of bread, which speaks of Christ's body, and in prayer, prepared for the rapture of the church. At this point, I would record that we have had notable men in our church who lived for God's work, such as our former presidents, pastors Manuel dos Passos Barros and Edward Heming Dodd, evangelist Jonas Marx, and Pastor Jada's Gueros, who is still alive. But we perceive that the Holy Spirit anointed and empowered Pastor Jedalti Gueros to establish the church's doctrine. How so? Is not the apostles' doctrine the doctrine upon which the church has been built since Pentecost? Yes, but from the beginning, the Holy Spirit warned us, notably using Pastor Jedalti for this purpose, to the possibility and necessity of knowing what lies beyond the letter in the Bible, the word illuminated by the Holy Spirit, the word of God that is living and effective. To explain this better, the Holy Spirit began to use Pastor Jedalti to help us see Jesus in all the scriptures and give us understanding of how to live and practice and benefit from each biblical doctrine. We thus understood that the doctrines of the Word are not merely objects of our faith, but also must necessarily be lived and practiced. The word of God truly became a lamp for our daily life and liked to illuminate the path of the Lord Jesus Church. We learn to listen to what the Holy Spirit is saying to the church today, thus heeding the Lord Jesus exhortation, repeated seven times in the Book of Revelation. We learn to live and practice the doctrine of the Body of Christ, where the members, including the pastors, live in communion with one another, gathering to pray together, frequently and regularly, and to seek together the counsel of the Lord Jesus, manifested through spiritual gifts, that the Holy Spirit continues to grant to those who seek this grace. We learn not merely to believe in the biblical teaching about the blood of Jesus, but we learn to appropriate by faith and prayer the power of this blood to provide us each day with forgiveness and cleansing from our sins, liberation, deliverance, protection, communion, and peace with God. In short, Pastor Jedalti Gueros was used by the Holy Spirit to leave us a treasure of inestimable value because it is an eternal treasure, a treasure that has left a mark on the lives of hundreds of thousands of people in Brazil and in more than 90 countries around the world. That changed, is changing, and will continue to change the course of churches on every continent of the world. He was an obedient leader, submissive to the Holy Spirit, who taught us to put God's kingdom first, to deny ourselves, take up our cross, and follow Master Jesus. He taught us that our Lord Jesus is worthy of our leaving behind every burden, that is, every hindrance, to run the race of faith. He taught us that pastoral ministry is more important than a life focused on the interests and values of this world. Finally, this legacy of Pastor Jedalti was transmitted and recorded in the hearts and minds of pastors and other members of the Lord's church. And I'm not referring only to Maranatha, where today we are confident that we will continue to walk, observing the same teachings and mysteries of God's word as it was revealed to us by the Holy Spirit. And all will see that the leader has passed away, but his teachings and the example of life that he left us will continue to be lived and practiced by the church of which he was one of the main founders. This, in my understanding, is the distinctive mark, an undeniable sign of his apostolate. Having spoken briefly about the remarkable professional and intellectual qualities of Pastor Jedalti, I did what I am certain he would have wanted me to do, to speak more about the treasure he left behind, emphasizing what the Holy Spirit accomplished through his ministry. Pastor Jedalti, if you were among us today, could say as an expression of truth, "I seek not what is yours, but you yourselves, for children should not lay up treasure for their parents, but parents for their children. I will most gladly spend and be spent for your souls." Jedalti spent and was spent out of love for the Lord Jesus and for the Lord Jesus Church. Thank you very much. At this moment, I give the floor to Pastor Colonel Julio Cesar Costa, Presbyterian Councilor of Maranatha Church.
His Excellency Senator Magna Malta, president of this special session. His Excellency, the president of the republic, Jeremias Bolsonaro. His Excellency, Pastor Alexandre Gueros, president of Maranatha Christian Church. I greet in a very special way Pastor Jedalti's family, represented here by his son-in-law Albert Bytren and his daughter Jarama Gueros, his granddaughter Sarah, and his grandson Jonata, colleagues from the Presbyterian Council, brothers from Maranatha Church who are also with us in addition to this senate throughout Brazil and the world. Ladies and gentlemen, it is with immense honor and deep emotion that I occupy this rostrum as a representative appointed by the Gueros-Petra family to express on this solemn date this just and memorable posthumous tribute to Pastor Jedalti Gueros, a man whose life was an unwavering testimony of Christian faith, generous dedication to others, and the redemptive mission that guided every step of his journey. In addition to being a dedicated, caring, and exemplary son, husband, father, father-in-law, and grandfather, Pastor Jedalti Gueros passed away on July 5th of this year, leaving a deep void in the hearts of all who walked with him in faith and in the Lord's work. Allow me, before I proceed, to extend my special greetings to the esteemed Senator Magna Malta, representative in the senate of the Espirito Santo delegation, a man who has always been supportive of the good cause of the gospel of Jesus, whose sensitivity and firmness of purpose made this special session possible. In recognition of one of the most relevant evangelical leaders Brazil has ever known, Jedalti Gueros. As is well-known, he was born in Bomb Jesus do Itimbapuana, raised from a young age under Christian principles by his parents, whom I had the opportunity to meet, who placed him in a unique position with a very strong character shaped by the gospel of Jesus. Under his visionary and entrepreneurial leadership, the Maranatha Christian Church expanded, reaching global missionary dimensions with a presence in nearly 100 countries. bringing the message of the Gospel to millions of people in faithful obedience to the Great Commission of Jesus as recorded in Matthew. Therefore, go and make disciples of all nations. Throughout his journey, Pastor Jedalti Garros, together with his unforgettable wife, Donna Jarama Barros Garros, a woman of faith, wisdom, and tenderness, dedicated themselves with immense integrity to the Lord's calling, alongside notable men such as Pastor Manuel dos Passos Barros, Pastor Edward Dodd, and evangelist Jonas Jose Marx, all under the same heavenly inspiration. They dedicated their lives as true heralds of the good news proclaiming the Gospel in Brazil and abroad. The memory of these servants and the unity and fellowship that moved then is an incalculable spiritual legacy. In this journey of faith and dedication, there was no shortage of fruit. Pastor Jedalti Garros received numerous significant honors, as shown in his institutional video presented here he became during his lifetime by unanimous decision of the Legislative Assembly of the State of Espirito Santo, the namesake of a commendation bearing his name to be awarded annually to the evangelical religious community. Recently, he was nominated to be honored in Paris, France, by the Society for the Encouragement of Progress with the Centennial Great Gold Medal, awarded annually to individuals and institutions whose contributions have profoundly shaped human progress. His life was also marked by an unwavering commitment to Christian education. In this context, it is worth mentioning his creation of the Pastor Edward Dodd Educational Institute, which reflects his zeal for education grounded in biblical principles and values, forming men and women who are capable and God-fearing. It is equally important to highlight the invaluable role of the Garros family in Brazilian evangelism. Alongside his beloved wife Jarama, Pastor Jedalti built a testimony of faith that will certainly endure in the generations that follow today. We honor with reverence the Garros Betra family, represented by Pastor Jedalti's daughter, Dr. Jarama Garros, his son-in-law Albert Velton, his granddaughter Sarah Garros, and his grandson Jonathan Garros, who keep alive the spiritual heritage left by this great revivalist. Regarding men like this who not only live, but build spiritual pathways, and here I make an observation that all this text I have written comes from my own experience of life lived with Pastor Jedalti as my spiritual leader. The poet and pastor Carlos Neja wrote, "There are men who are permanent lights; they do not fade with time; they are living memory and continuous presence." These words accurately portray Pastor Jedalti Garros, whose light did not fade with death, but expanded into legacy and became a reference, as the Apostle Paul teaches us in 2 Corinthians, Chapter 5, Verse 1: "For we know that if our earthly house, this tent, is destroyed, we have a building from God, a house not made with hands eternal in the heavens." Yes, yes, we believe that Pastor Jedalti was called home to eternity and now dwells in the glorious presence of the Lord Jesus, whom he served with such love, dedication, and zeal. He himself used to say, "We are in search of an experience that will lead us to eternity." And so he walked with steadfastness on this road of faith until his last day. He is not just a memory; he is a living reference who will continue to inspire generations to seek a life of dedication, holiness, and revelation. I conclude with the ever-living message that we so often heard from his lips and that echoes with even greater force at this moment: "Maranatha, the Lord Jesus is coming." May this plea continue to guide the hearts of those who were reached by his ministry, and may his memory always be a light pointing upward toward heaven, toward eternity with God. On behalf of the Garros Betra family, I express our most sincere gratitude to the Federal Senate in the person of Senator Magno Malta and his daughter, who is also with us this afternoon for the initiative of this solemn tribute for the wonderful organization that this Senate has provided also in partnership with the church. We extend our gratitude to all the senators, deputies, civil, ecclesiastical, and military authorities, as well as to the brothers and sisters of the Maranatha Christian Church and to the other guests present here. The presence of such honorable authorities and friends in this moment of remembrance and recognition comforts our hearts and reaffirms the spiritual, ethical, and social dimensions of the one we honor today in this special session of the Brazilian Senate. May this tribute remain as a living testimony to Pastor Jedalti Garros' tireless labor in the Lord's work and the living hope he proclaimed until his last breath. Thank you very much.
At this moment, I give the floor to Mr. Albert Betra, Pastor Jedalti's son-in-law.
His Excellency, Mr. President of this session, our Senator Magno Malta; His Excellency, President Jair Bolsonaro; His Excellency, President of the Maranatha Church, Alexandre Garros, Pastor Alexandre, Pastor Julio; the members of the board, other authorities, pastors present here; the members of our church, members of other evangelical churches who honor us with their presence here in this solemn session, friends, employees of this house, ladies and gentlemen. My words here are impromptu, but they express gratitude for all this effort to honor and remember Jedalti's legacy. Jedalti was a very simple man. I can say extremely simple. His life was a very simple routine. Accompanied by a few friends, he was not a sophisticated person. He was not extravagant, but he had a zeal for the church that was very remarkable, his concern to care for this church. And he never wanted to be a burden to anyone. He was always concerned about not being a burden to the people who followed him. I remember he wouldn't let me carry his suitcase. I always offered, and even at ninety-something years old, he wouldn't let me carry his bag. He insisted on carrying his own things. He never wanted to be a burden, never wanted to receive a salary, never wanted privileges within the church, never wanted the church to support him, nor did he ever let the church pay his expenses when he passed away. I asked the friends and staff who cared for him at the Presbyterian to go to his house and remove his belongings from the Presbyterian. And it wasn't a surprise, they are here today and told me, "Look, there's nothing from the Presbyterian at his house." He was always a very strict man regarding church matters, but his last words that he spoke to my wife, to Jarama. In the hospital, he was lucid the entire time. He told her that the greatest difficulty of his ministry was saying no. He always struggled with that because his family was very generous. They were always very kind. And he had a relative, a cousin. Whenever someone visited his house and mentioned they liked something, he insisted the person leave with it, wrapped up as a gift up. And he said, "This is my nature; this is my family." I gave things away, never made a fuss about anything, but in the church, I had to say no. I had to say no to many people. That was my greatest struggle, the greatest struggle of my ministry. He was always very attentive to his family, always very present with his family, even at the height of his busy schedule, when he balanced work and church. The job he had at the college, the job he had in the Navy. He never failed to answer his daughter's calls. Whenever she called him, he never failed to answer the phone. This is a family testimony. And I conclude by saying that Jedalti lived an extremely simple life. He was a person of very simple habits. He didn't spend on himself. He had no vanities. He truly wasn't, but at his passing, at his death, he received honors that are rarely seen. He had the funeral of a prince. The flower shops in the state in Vitoria had run out of flowers. All the flowers from every flower shop in our city were gone. He received the honors of a head of state, but lived his entire life with great simplicity. I want to thank everyone once again for this tribute to those present. May God bless you all.
I acknowledge the presence of Bishop Sidney Santos from Restoration and Miracles Church. I ask everyone's permission to speak, but to address the TV Senado audience at this moment on social media, to the people watching us around the world. I asked my doctor to discharge me. I had surgery. Four days ago, on my spine, I have a spinal cord injury and my spine has a very large graft. And twenty-three years later, I started feeling pain. And the only way to perform my surgery was through my abdomen, since they couldn't reach the anatomy of my spine due to the scar tissue that formed there. But thank God, four days ago, we're going into the fifth day, I was hospitalized and this surgery was performed robotically. I really have many bandages on my back. I have a strong taste of medication in my mouth. But I told my doctor, Dr. Paulo said, "I need to be discharged tomorrow because I need to. I need to preside over the session." This is not just any one this is not just any honoree, even if it were Pastor Jedalti from the Maranatha Christian Church or another leader. If it were just an honoree, I could have stayed in my place in the hospital. This restlessness I have here is actually the pain I feel all the time. But God granted me the privilege of standing despite science's denial regarding my spinal cord injury. But I'm standing and I came because my connection with President Bolsonaro and Pastor Jedalti was like an umbilical cord. I was a young man of twenty-three. I arrived in Espirito Santo in 1982. I was embraced by the people of Espirito Santo, like every simple poor boy from the interior of the northeast. I think that most of them, in their great majority, all had and went through my problem, a dental problem. And I started looking for dentists. And they would tell me, "No, there's no way you have to extract everything and put in dentures." I said, "No, not dentures." Then there's no way, no solution exists. They recommended a very good one, but I couldn't afford to pay, but I went there anyway. He looked and said, "No, you don't have the slightest chance here." But is this the final word? He said, "Look, there's only one person who can give you the final word, Pastor Dag Jedalti. But who is he?" He said, "Look, his office is in Vila Valha, and I live in Vila Valha." He gave me the address and I went. It was the first time I had seen an automatic gate and tinted glass. I went in without an appointment, arrived at the door, the gate opened, and the secretary received me. I told her I wanted to speak with him. She notified him and had me sit there. Then he had me called in, I entered. He looked at me and asked, "What do you want?" I said, "I don't want to wear dentures," he said. "Sit down in his manner, you know." Those listening to my story can picture him, can't they? "Sit down." I sat down, he said, "Open your mouth." I opened my mouth, he said, "Go down." I said, "But why, doctor?" He said, "There was no solution." He asked, "Can you afford it?" I said, "I don't know." He said, "You can't afford it." He told me to wait outside, I asked, "Why?" "Someone very important is coming." Then I looked through the glass and saw someone arriving indeed. Dr. Jones dos Santos Neves at that time, this man owned almost all the coffee in Espirito Santo, you know, and his son was a federal congressman. Dr. Jones, a congressman from the P L party. And I simply stood there, looking at that man with admiration, a federal congressman. When they left, he told me to come back. I returned. He said, "Listen, I'm going to take care of your teeth." "Not your teeth," I corrected. "I'm going to treat your mouth because you don't have any teeth, but it's only once a week," he told me. I said, "But I live in Cachoeiro. That's not my problem. It's only once a week." "This will take about two years," he said. I said, "Okay, what can I do?" I would take the Itapemirim bus to get there or go with my old car. I already had a house full of addicts. I really couldn't afford to pay because I had to sell lunch to have dinner with my daughters, who were very young, tiny and skinny. And there were already ten or fifteen addicts in the house, which was the ministry God gave me. And I went there every week. And one day, the dentist said to me, "Hey, I heard around town that you cast out demons, right?" I said, "Listen, pastor, in the name of Jesus, in the authority of the name of Jesus, the name of Jesus is like a blank check. You can fill in whatever amount you want." In his name, he said, "Yes, okay, okay, okay." This "okay" of his was his characteristic way of ending the conversation. "Okay, okay," then he said to me, "Listen, your wealthy relatives will pay." "They told me to get it done," I said, "but there are no relatives from Espirito." He said, "No, that gentleman who just left is your uncle," I said. "How is he my uncle?" "I don't have any relatives here." "No, but he's your uncle. He'll help pay for your treatment." I said, "Okay, and I think these uncles of mine paid for my treatment." About a year later, he said, "I'm going to perform surgery on your gums." Science and technology are advancing rapidly in my field of dentistry. The day will come when, if you need something done in the future, they'll have to use this surgery that I'm going to perform on you. It was very invasive. I remember it took a long time to heal. And he said that one day, if you have the means in the future, he'll make a comeback. I was a senator in two thousand and four. When I heard that he had developed dental implants, I went to to the office of a man named Edson, who brought Brunemark, the man who won the Nobel Prize. He received the Nobel Prize in Medicine for creating the implant, but he was an orthopistist. I needed both a lot in my life. I still need an orthopedist to this day and I went. When they began examining me, taking all the images of my gums and mouth, they said, "This surgery you have here inside, Senator, when was this done?" I told them the story of Pastor Jedalti. They said, "Well, because of this surgery, we'll be able to do the implants for you." And a week later, I had eleven implants done and this smile of mine bears Jedalti's touch. I lived with this man throughout my life. Through difficult times and moments of joy, I told him, "Pastor, I'm running for city councillor in Cachoeiro," he said. "You're crazy." He said, "No, pastor, where did you get this idea that you're going to win as city councillor?" I said, "Pastor, I am the fruit of a prophecy. God spoke to my mother when I was thirteen years old that I would become a senator." He said, "There you go." When I saw that look on your face the first time, I knew you weren't right in the head. Don't you see? He knew the Holy Spirit, he knew the political class, he knew everything, who was who in any municipality. He said, "Look, you're going to face this, this and this. Do you have what it takes?" I said, "No, but the one who called me does," he said. "Then go. God loves crazy people. Go." And I went and became a city councillor. I went to him to say, "Pastor Jedalti, I'm now running for state representative," he said. "That's just like you." I said, "Look, I need you to help me." "I want to go to Mahanam," he said, "No." "But everyone else is going, but you're not going," he said to me. I said, "Pastor, let me go to Mahanam. You're not going to Mahanam." "All right." He gave me an ultimatum. I got elected as state representative. I went to introduce myself to him at his office. "I'm a state representative." He looked at me and said, "You're still crazy." I told him, "Pastor, I've come to invite you to Bible Day and for you to preach at the Legislative Assembly." He said, "No, I won't accept," I said, "but how can you not accept?" It was difficult, very difficult, but I convinced him I have the photos. I'll show them to you. I promise. Photos from that day at the Espirito Santo State Legislative Assembly, Julio. He preached, brought a worship team with guitars. They sat in the front and sang. I told him, "Pastor, I'm running for federal representative." He said, "I'll support you again." And I understood, like President Bolsonaro understood, why he used to say no to me at Mahanam. At the shopping mall, I was walking around, handing out my campaign material. I encountered a group of well-dressed ladies handing out papers. They approached me. "Excuse me," I said, "yes, of course. We want to ask for a vote for this young man. He helps drug addicts recover. He's hardworking. Our pastor asked us to support him." I said, "All right." I even received it in writing. Good times that won't come back, written votes. I received it from a woman at Zero, Maranatha Christian Church. I didn't need to go there because he was the one doing it for me. That's why I didn't need to go. I was elected as a federal deputy. I received this from that man on the day I became president of the Narcotics CPI when I returned to my state. Senator Begato, I went to look for him and he laid his hand on me. He said, "You're going to face the toughest battle of your life." It was true. My daughters had to travel with federal police protection, my wife too, and myself. Great danger, I fulfilled that period. And I told him, "Now, Pastor Jedalti, I'm running for Senator of the Republic. My time has come." This time, he didn't say I was crazy. He laid his hand on me, called me brave, blessed me. My relationship with him was biblical in nature. I don't know if it was because he had no son and he was brave, but I accompanied him throughout this journey. I see many people praising him, saying, "Pastor Jedalti, he's an example. He was an example." No, according to my mother. He wasn't an example and never will be. My mother used to say, "Pastor Alexandra Guero said that the wicked serve as examples, the good serve to be copied." Paul wrote and said, "Be imitators of me as I am of Christ Jesus." He could, in his boldness as the interpreter of Christ's mind, say, "I am the example. Look at me." He says, "No, imitate me because I imitate Christ, because the wicked serve as examples and we are living in days when we have too many examples in the world and in the nation. The wicked serve as examples, the good serve to be copied. And the Bible speaks of men of whom the world was not worthy." And I can, through personal fellowship, not from a speech that I copied, say that Pastor Jedalti Gueros is a man who fits this context, a man of whom the world was not worthy. Men of whom the world was not worthy. The message he preached, the message of the gospel, is the same message that this denomination preaches until the Lord's return. As we await his return, and as I said at the beginning, the signs point to the Lord's return. We are living in days of sorrows. In the antechamber of the Antichrist, the Lord takes to himself one of his own to whom he gave the mission so thorny, yet so glorious of serving in the ministry. And I rejoice at this moment to have the opportunity to speak to the world, to speak to Brazil about the legacy of this man, about his life. His son-in-law, Pastor Julio, Pastor Alexandra, who live with the simplicity of this man who never asked me for a cent for the good he did for me. On the contrary, in our fellowship, I could see that when I arrived, he had such joy in being able to care for me. And just as the prophecy was fulfilled, today I am a Senator of the Republic for the third time. I knew this since I was thirteen years old. God used this man as an instrument because God uses people as instruments and the world does not belong to men. Authority does not rest with men. The world is under his feet because the Bible says that the world lies in the evil one and the devil does not compete on the same level. The Lord is above all things. Whatever happens must have his authorization, his permissive will. And in this moment, we are living through. God is watching. God is looking. God is watching. God cares. And I want to speak to those who feel the pain of this passing and to those who are feeling the pain, the birth pangs in the suffering that this country is experiencing, that we are experiencing. It is that the comfort zone has no miracles. The miracle is found precisely in the discomfort zone. And we are no longer living in the comfort zone. He will not let you be tested beyond your strength. And then I realized that our strength has failed. When we look at the chaos, it has already failed. And my hope is in God's timing. It's God's moment for life. "Repent," said John the Baptist. "The time has come. People Maranatha, come, Lord Jesus." We are heading toward the end. Make no mistake. We are already closer than we are far. We are approaching the day of the King's return. And it is worth serving him, worth following him, walking with him at this important moment. The worship team will present the song "A Balla Sadad." Request that the General Secretariat display another video. Life is a garden. We know many types of flowers and there is a type of flower called longing. And life is a garden where longings are planted. There is a day in life when the sounds of earth disappear. The singing of birds, the beauty friends, moments of happiness and also those moments of the purple flower. Because man is an unhappy being. When he thinks about dying, he realizes he will leave behind all his values, family, loved ones, everything he has accomplished. He knows that one day he will leave it all behind. And many suffer because they don't know why they are born, why they live and why they die. This is a lack of hope. God's purpose for mankind is not this. And Jesus clearly said, "I have come that they may have life and have it abundantly." It is so that you may live this life, an eternal life. Now, under the leadership of Senator Magno Malta, the proposer of this session, this gathering. I acknowledge that my relationship, my friendship, my gratitude to this man of God, servant of the Most High God. servant of the Most High, God's mouthpiece here, transcends any relationship of convenience. He has always treated me as a son. It moves me to see a session with this attendance, this caliber. The respectful manner in which the authorities honor at this moment the fifty years of this ministry of the Kingdom of God. Nothing more, nothing less than proclaiming life. If it was ever attacked, it is because it confronted hell. And whoever confronts hell must expect a reaction. Because if no reaction comes, the church is wrong. The reaction comes. I know of no prophet in the word of God who was not attacked by the powers that be. I know of no prophet in the word of God who was not confronted by the powers that be, who tried to spit upon and silence throughout the years in their arenas the sublime, sacred and saving message of the gospel. And if it was attacked one day, it was nothing more than the same arena attempting to silence a work established fifty years ago. And we, loud and clear, who know the word and its promises, father against son, son against father, nation against nation. So it shall be in the last days, we can say, Maranatha, come, Lord Jesus. At this moment, the Federal Senate renders just tribute to Pastor Jedalti's family, in recognition of his dedication and tireless commitment to the cause of Christ's gospel and the spiritual formation of generations. I invite the family representatives, Albert Britna and Jurama Barros Guerrero's Brita, to receive the honor. I am pleased to note the presence of Senator Jamie Bagatoli from Rondonia, our friend from the church. And I greet those who arrived later. I don't have their names, but if they are here, they have a purpose I want to acknowledge. In this plenary session, the presence of Sister Hilda. This giant in such a tiny body. Jedalti was like that, a giant in a small body. I want to publicly thank my mother. She prays and fasts in my office every week so that God keeps us standing and united. May we have no other refuge but him. I thank you for your presence, ma'am. Brazil admires, loves and respects you. To close this session, the praise team will perform Patria Mia. Having fulfilled the purpose of this special Senate session, I thank the distinguished guests who honored us with their participation. This concludes the session.